Chris Filmers was also K I S. This is part of public in attendance, so this that would be line through. Just a dramatic, oh, line eighty-eight, to change my parking spaces. It wasn't here, but I'm a little confused how it was being said in lines, well, ninety-one, ninety-two. Mr. Dakota suggested letters from the Public Safety Department and the businesses involved that state parking isn't an issue. Was that meant for skateboard parking?
Yeah, skate parking.
Skate parking.
I thought it meant that it was the state that parking was not an issue.
Oh, that state vet parking is not an issue?
Correct.
The state vet parking, okay. So overall parking, not specifically for skateboard, okay.
Well, no, that doesn't make any sense, because it, again, I think you're right, that it was originally intended to mean state. Somebody have to go back and listen, because why would the businesses have anything to do with state parking?
That state vet.
There's a "that" missing, "state that."
I changed it to "to state that parking isn't an issue."
All right, fine.
Is there again, because I wasn't here, I think, but one thirty-two, one thirty-three, Black Bear Lodge could be the delay due to upsets in their board? Or is that?
Yeah, it's actually, it's just that the manager resigned, there's no upsets in the board.
Changes or something like that.
So it's really administrative.
Yeah, I know that it's really good that they don't have a manager right now, has nothing to do with the board.
It's not as much negative as it is probably difficult to get a response.
So are we saying that it's okay if the Black Bear Lodge could delay this, or, I mean, the board had sixty days to act. It seems like the timeline is being discussed, so is it a picture of allowance stated to the Black Bear Lodge?
I just told him that I would email the board and figure it out for him, I did. He knows who he needs to contact, I did that within a week.
Right, so is it just that there would be communications with Black Bear, so there would not be delays? I'm just wondering how to make it be possible.
It sounds like they were just concerned with the board maybe delaying.
No, he was concerned because there wasn't a manager, so there wasn't a single point of contact. That was his concern, it had nothing to do with the board, actually, this is not right.
Particular word in that sentence.
Right.
A nice word, right? Depart.
So you decide how to change the sentence to make it make sense for future years? Well, it should say, I, due to the resignation of the manager. Would you to the manager resignation? Could be the delay. Black Bear Lodge could be the delay, yeah, because you were there wasn't a single point of contact.
Why do you want me?
One thirty-two, one thirty-two until one thirty-three. It just doesn't, because we, we're not implying that Black Bear Lodge can delay the process. And this is what Tim said, we didn't say anything.
Yeah, he was explaining, I think he was concerned about the time element. He said that he, I think he made the statement that the.
So should we express like?
Maybe delayed by Black Bear.
Maybe he expressed concern that.
Yeah, that would make more sense.
Yeah.
You really need more time?
May your motion to accept the meeting minutes of the eleventh as amended?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Okay, the May eleventh meeting minutes have been accepted as amended. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the continued public hearing for the skateboard park from the May meeting.
Didn't it say it was continued until nine thirty-five? Oh, no, is that in there? No, my, sorry, I think I had to say anything.
David Dean. David, you have anything to present to the board with regard to the follow-up on the?
Well, I believe that you have letters with your packet today. Make sure that happened, and I do have an updated site plan for you. One of the items on there was to essentially locate the skate park on a site plan that shows the, shows the complete parcel. If you don't mind, I'll just pass them on. Can I do that?
You may.
Do you like one, please? And for what it's worth, that was using your newly adopted GIS mapping, which is pretty slick. To make edits from the maps that I provided already is, is difficult, so I made a new one, just for what it's worth on that. And let me do add, in addition to this, that the operation and maintenance of that park is part of the town square O and M procedures. I did talk to them, and they reassured me that's it. I do have an email, I did not print that out, but they reassured me as far as cleanup, that is part of that program. They'll be out there doing actually some landscaping, clearing brush and things like that in the next couple of days. It's a different crew.
Okay, do we have copies of the letters?
Yeah, it's in the packet. It's in the package, I think it's on the, it's in the packet, it's in the packet.
This is not a package.
Yeah, it's on, keep going, it's in the packet.
Okay, so one of the things we had asked, or some of the things that we had asked to provide were letters from the easement participants, landowners and so forth, and asked for this package that you provided here, is that correct?
That's, that's the intent.
Well, it says an interest easement, does it? It's all butters.
Butters that, that shared in the parking easements.
They're the same ones who share in the parking easements. You were asking for the snowy owl to say?
Because they have used those parking easements in order to get approval for their.
That's correct.
So they're saying, it's all right with me.
Right.
If you use my parking spaces, as long as.
Right.
If I need them, I can get them back.
Well, they don't even say in most cases, if I need them, they just say, it's okay with me.
Yep.
But that does raise the point, have we, is there an easement that grants, that originally granted the right to put the skateboard park over there? And do we have a copy of that easement? Is it a written easement, or is it a verbal understanding?
I don't think there was ever an easement or an understanding, I mean, that's my knowledge, I don't agree with that. I just think that somebody said, let's put a skateboard park there, and probably Waterville Company said, yeah, that's okay with me. I mean, I don't know.
That's the way I understand it to be.
There's no easement.
There's nothing, there's no document or anything, okay?
I think, wasn't that one of the things you talked about last month?
Well, I was picking up on the fact that, that in the minutes you had suggested that they, he also, and this was you, Mark, suggested a new easement from the Waterville Company to the, to the ski area, allowing them to use the land with the skateboard park.
Yeah, but I think we wanted discussion after that that said, I don't think we want to get into altering easements. I think that we just wanted to give.
Oh, okay.
I, I think if we get letters from those who are required to have those parking areas in order, in order to do their business, because that's what they used in order to get approval, if they say it's okay to use those parking spaces, we don't really need them, and it's okay for the skateboard park to use them, but I, I do think it's important that it somehow be said somewhere that if those parking spaces are needed, again, that the skateboard park will give them up to those owners.
I think we could do that in the motion for approval.
We probably can. I think it'd be too difficult to get it from these individuals here, but I think it has to be covered, because otherwise we're just saying our requirements don't mean anything.
But do you have a letter from the Waterville Company that says the skate park can operate on my land?
I think we had that last time.
Yeah, I think you did too.
Yeah.
I think that's the last page.
The original, can you say in the original?
I believe so, we had, did have one.
Okay, as lo, as lo, I think as long as there's a letter there, and then you contingent your approval on the parking spaces not being needed.
There is a letter dated April twenty-sixth as part of the application from Waterville Company. Says Waterville Company is happy to allow Waterville Ski Area Resort to use WCI land across from Town Square, where the skateboard park is currently situated for the continued operation of the skateboard park.
Okay, all right, so they're aware of and they will appro, okay.
Yeah, we had gotten that, and we had asked for these additional letters for other people that were affected, basically.
Well, then I, I'm gonna propose a motion, all right, but let me read it first, because we, we all have the wanting to make some amendments.
Can I add something before you open up for the proposal, Bill, just to make sure it's good? This is helpful, the plan here, but it, it doesn't really show the easements. And I, I think it's important that we have something, a plan or something that shows these easements. It doesn't show parking in the, in the place where the skateboard park is located, it just shows it on a vacant lot. And though, there is, in that specific area where the skate park is, I believe, an easement, I know, I realize it's a written easement, but I believe there are parking spaces there or were.
Underneath, underneath.
Underneath it, and I think they should show, because I think that's an integral part of this whole approval. The, the whole reason we're going through this is because of that. And I'm not asking you to go out and get an engineer to do this, David, just, I, I think it's, it's important that we have a plan somewhere that shows the situation.
So in your packet, third page from the end, there's a map that is not taken from your, I think it's GIS. It's a part of a map that, that I have at the office, and I scaled it, well, I just took part of it, so it fit in eight and a half by eleven piece of paper, essentially.
I might have these pages mixed up, so are you talking about the boundary plan that says boundary?
It says skate park site plan, one inch equals a hundred, it's this one.
Okay.
That identifies the easement boundary.
So based on this, there's no easement with regard to the skateboard park, in other words, there is no parking, there's no parking easement relative to the skateboard park.
That's how I interpret that, and I also, I also went out there, and, oh, how do I explain this? The, the parking lots that are close to the skateboard park are dirt, and I went out to the skateboard park, and that is blacktop underneath the skateboard park, and it happens to be the exact dimensions of the skateboard park. Clarify me if I'm wrong, but it, it looks to me that there's, there's been blacktop pavement, however you want to put it, put down, and then the skateboard park put on top of it, I don't think that was ever parking.
Yes, it was. That's why they put the skateboard park there, because it was blacktop, that's why they put it down there. They had the bike, the BMX bike area, and then they had a paved parking lot beside it with some dirt parking lots around it. Am I not remembering that correctly? Because I'm.
Well, I don't know, you, you, you're raising, do we have, I think what you're raising the question is, do we have a drawing someplace that shows the original parking easements in that area?
Yes, there is a plan that you, that Ray Kacharsky used when you counted all the parking spaces.
Okay.
Remember for Green, Green Peak?
Would seem that we need to, which I think what you're asking for is, could, could we get that plan that, that says all these parking spaces were, you know, were part of an easement for general parking for these three businesses, and then show on that plan in like a dotted line where the skateboard park is going to go?
That's right, because if this is true.
This, this one, yeah.
That you have submitted, that there is no easement, it just doesn't involve any easements.
That's right.
There's really no issue, this is a, this is a.
Right, if there are no easements out there that says this was part, allocated for parking.
Then you don't have to.
Then it's only a question, is it allowed use?
That's correct.
And, yeah.
So you're going through all this?
Apologize or not, but I just started, I just picked that up the other day as I.
Yeah.
Re-looked at this thing.
Is there any way we can get a look at that map that Ray put together, just to verify that that's the case?
Yeah, I don't know that I could put my hands on it right this second, but we, we can find it and let you know, and if you want to come in and look at it.
What I can do too, is this is part of a bigger map that I happen to have at the office, we, we printed that map out for, it was for a refi, basically. And, but it's a bigger, it's a bigger map, so I can get that to you too, if needed, because it's got a title block on it and a date on it and that sort of stuff.
I think that's a key issue here. There's no sense in putting through all this aggravation if there's no easements involved here.
Which we did go through, and it seems like it's okay.
We got the map, Mark, we have, we have.
We, we have a map that shows all of the parking lots.
Right, so we need to get a copy of that map to the mountain, so they can look at it and say, okay, from, from our measurements, the skateboard park fits here on that map.
Right.
And you could include that as part of the package.
Right, and we need to, we would, it would be good to get a copy of that.
It would be very good to get a copy of that.
So there's no confusion.
If it is some sort of an official map that has been, it's on the.
Oh, it was, yeah, it was a Waterville Company map of the, because you used it in counting the parking spaces when Bill came in for the subdivision for Green Peak, and you were talking about parking for, for those three units. You were, he was trading, remember, he was trading spaces?
Well, I do remember them coming in, but that's about it.
Okay, well, because we don't have it right now, I would like to go through these letters that we have and see if it satisfies the requirements that we were looking for. And we won't spend a lot of time on that today, but we'll look through them. And if you would be willing, Dave, to, as a part of this application, get a copy of that map that we're talking about, and include that the way you've done here, you know, and add a map in addition to this, I guess, that says, look, this is the town accepted map with regard to how the parking place is counted, where the easements are, we're outside that, therefore, it's not an issue. Then we can take that up in all this other work with regard to the letters, would basically be unnecessary. However, in order to expedite things and keep it going, I'd like to look at both those things right now, just depending which way it falls. But in order to do that, we will need a permission from you to extend the period of time for approval, because that will put us sixty-three days after the application, we really only have sixty days for approval. Do we have that permission?
What is, well, number one, on this new map that you're looking for, would it be, would it be acceptable to shrink it down to eight and a half by eleven? Or you want something big?
As long as, as long as it's legible.
I think it will be, but I'll look at that first, just don't want to.
Yeah, I mean, I can pretty much repeat.
The intent there's, there you go, the intent there was not to, you know, add a great big map to this thing.
Right, or you can, you can put it in sections, you know.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
It would be best if it was all one piece, and if it was legible, that would be great.
Okay, and then how can I best get that to you in a timely manner?
Present it to Mark.
There you go, we'll get to you guys.
Mark, can you get it out to us?
So as far as your other question, if we extend it, what does that, does that do anything to the existing conditions over there?
No, no, you're operating right now under an agreement, it was a cease and desist order that was held, assuming that you would go through the process of trying to get this resolved.
Which you're doing now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think it makes any difference.
Well, that's fine, yeah, it's fine for me.
Okay, so you do allow us that extension?
Sure.
Okay.
That, that needs to be in the next year. That, that needs to be in the next G.
Alright, so let's look at these letters then, let's assume for the moment that easements are involved, and let's look at these letters so that if it does turn out that they are, we'll have taken care of that issue. We had asked for letters from those affected stating that they're okay with it. We have one here from Waterville VSR.
Ski Resort.
I'm sorry?
Waterville Valley Ski Resort, W V S R.
Skateboard park is in its current, in its current location does not and has not in as many years there posed any problems for the Town Square. It has no impact on the number of available spaces, parking spaces, though the skate park is used regularly by residents of Waterville Valley and surrounding communities, there are rarely cars parked there. I believe it is a nice amenity for the community. April Smith, Director of Lodging and Village Operations. That doesn't technically say we don't mind if you use my parking spaces, but I think it lends to the fact that it's not a problem and there's not a lot of parking there. And does Waterville Valley Ski Resort, I mean, they're their own, they own the skateboard park, is that correct?
That's correct.
So.
Same company.
But, yeah. Yeah.
So they.
Different division.
Yeah. The second letter is Snowy Owl. We understand the resort is working with the Town of Waterville Valley Planning Board to address concerns with respect to the skate park. As an abutter of the skate park, I wanted to write to you to support the park and hopefully to ensure reapproval of the planning board and the town. The park in its current location has never negatively impacted parking for our business, and even in times of great demand such as the Black Fly Tribe, I don't know what that word is, comes to mind, there's always been ample parking available for our guests as well as the visitors to the valley. Further, I believe the park is viewed as an amenity to those persons visiting the valley who are our customers. Snowy Owl, there's no objection to the continued presence of the skate park in the valley. Good luck at the upcoming board meeting and let me know if we can be of further assistance. Third letter is a email from Donna Hansel at Black Bear Lodge, I believe. Thank you for answering the board's questions regarding existing skate park adjacent to Black Bear, Black Bear Lodge's. Black Bear Lodge Board of Directors does not see any problem with the skate park's use of the footprint it now stands. The skate park has been on this site for many years, to the best of my knowledge, the park has always been ample with those, with most particip- uh, with most participants, participants probably riding their bikes to the park. We never had seen an overflow into the parking lot. We have no objections to the town planning board remove the permit. We have another email from Tim Smith. I guess that's just.
Well, there is one from David Noyes.
Yeah, apologies for that one, that one shouldn't be in there.
That's a part, that's a part of this. Dear Mr. Dean, a phone, from my phone, per our phone conversation this morning, there has been no parking issues at the skate park and the village road. We do not foresee any future parking issues with the current configuration. Please let me know if you, if there's anything else we can do to assist you. And that, and to this I want to add, because of the nature of these letters in the same vein, I did last year ask for a letter from the State Department. I can't remember who responded with it, it was Chris Hodges or David Noyes, in the same vein, it doesn't seem to have been a parking problem over all those years. And although these letters don't really get to what I wanted to get to, I think that the tone is correct and that these people, even though they're not saying specifically we don't mind or we're willing to give up our count with regard to our requirement for our approval with regard to these parking easements, I think that the tone is there and I would accept those letters. I'm suggesting, I don't know how the board feels about that.
I would agree with you, in fact, I, I would rather have a general tone letter than specifically than stating, because then we get into murky area, do they have a right to give up something that we designate they're supposed to have?
I, I agree, it leaves out the lawyers.
Yeah.
So then I'll, I'll make a motion that the board accept these letters as part of the application and to the fact that it adequately addresses the effect on the businesses with parking affected by the skate park.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then these letters submitted today will become a part of the application and the board will accept them as because addressing the parking easement issue. Then with that, I think that, Dave, you, you understand what it is that I require with regard, or we require with regard to the additional plan?
Yes.
That was discussed, and if you can get that to us, you've already acknowledged that we have an extension of time, then I'll, I'd like to, unless the, does the board have any other issue with regard to this application at this time?
Well, I'm wondering, do you wanna discuss the upkeep or the current conditions? I mean, I walked, took a walk through and there is certainly evidence of some, some partying happening, a lot of empty beer cans under, under those open sides, and I don't know if that's just a structural thing or some, I know you don't wanna close it in cause I'm sure the heat warps it would, but lattice work or something to help discourage kids from having a nice little hidey hole to do whatever under there.
Actually, we did have a comment from an abutter, and as a result of that, we discussed it a little bit, maybe you weren't here, but Tim was here, and I think he agreed to submit a plan for oversight, and also we had discussed photos, I forgot about that as well, since we don't have a real engineering plan, if you can just get some photos so we know what the existing facility is for the approval. So did you, have you put anything together with regard to oversight, as Wendy was asking?
Not, as far as I know, not a plan for oversight, I talked to Town Square and they said they cleaned it up. Dirt, what was it, the, the day after our mom cleaned up, we happened to be down there and cleaned that up too, so it's a work in progress. But I agree with you, the holes that are there should be plugged, and you're right, if they plug them up, then it will get moldy in there, so there's vents in there.
Right.
And so I'll commit that we will fix those. It's, yeah, I, I believe that it was done last year and without maintenance, you know, continued maintenance, it just falls apart.
Sure.
So I think you're absolutely right, I've seen it too, and so we can commit to getting a carpenter down there fixing that stuff up.
Would you be willing to make a written statement that's part of the application that states that as far as your oversight plan? That would be great if you could do that.
Yeah, I can add that with the other pieces.
Okay, and get, get some photos of the existing facility so that we have a record of what was there when we approved it, since we don't have any engineering plans to go by.
Okay.
That would be great. The other item that came up was landscaping, and I know there was some discussion about that, and I just wanna cover it. Does the board have any comments on that?
Well, I, I, my only comment would be that whatever we approve, I think one of the sub, I, I think we would reserve the right to revoke approval if they fail to maintain the safety, general appearance of the area. You know, that we would not grant it forever, that that would be a condition. Now, if, from my perspective, I think that would be important. Not that they wouldn't maintain it, but that some future owner could say, ah, I'll let it go to hell, you know?
Would you consider that to be appropriate for the oversight plan? As a part of the oversight plan, or would you be looking for something separate?
Well, I, whether, no, I, I have no problem with being part of the oversight plan, but I would also, whatever motion we make for approval, I think should contain words to that effect, that we reserve the right to revoke it.
Okay, well, we should make a note of that if that's the case, because we'll forget it.
Well, I'm, I've kinda written it down.
Okay.
So I'm, we're, since we're not gonna approve anything at this meeting, there's no sense going through it.
Right.
But I think that's the safest way to do it from the board's perspective, which is to give us the right to revoke it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the application for, at this point? Okay, well then, with that, I'll extend the public hearing until the next meeting. And Dave, if you can get us that information, and we'll bring it to us at least, if not before, at least at the next meeting anyway. We'll take it up again.
Great.
Thank you for attending, appreciate that, thank you. Okay, so please make a note in the minutes that the, the public hearing has been extended and will be taken up in the next meeting.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next item of business, under old business, discussion of the site plan review regulation workshop, and my name is after it, so I guess I'll take it. It was a good workshop, we had, I think we had attendance of four, but it was, I thought it was meaningful, and I think, is it Steve Whitley? Stephen Whitley was very helpful, and he had gone, we had asked him for some specific items with regard to the regulations that we have for the site plan review, and he did answer the question, one of them which was on the temporary, we had asked him about what was required with regard to development, you know, what would require a site plan review? And in reviewing the site planned regulations, which really refer also to the subdivision regulations in some ways, it basically says, look, all that stuff in the site subdivision regulation pretty much applies to site plan. And there was some conflicting information, for instance, in the subdivision regulations, the review is for both temporary and permanent facilities, it says, doesn't make any difference, which it is, that they both require a site plan review, whereas in the site plan review, it basically didn't deal with the issue of temporary. And so when asking about that, Steve suggested that the definition of temporary should be taken up by the board and should be added to the regulations. And then he went through several other items with regard to his review and said, there, I have some other suggestions here as well, and I've got about four pages of things, so I thought I'd just quickly go through them so that the board has some sort of an idea what we came up with, and if the board thinks we should proceed and go the next step, we'll have a combination of Mary and Steve Whitley work up these changes and we'll put them before the board. And it does not require a vote of the town, I think it does require a public hearing perhaps, but not a vote of the town, but we'll proceed through it that way. He suggested that we do a little bit better or get a better definition of what constitutes development, this follows what Tim Smith had said, you know, do I, if I put horseshoe pits out there, do I have to get a, a site plan review? And I, I think looking at the regulations, the way we have them now, it's pretty hard to determine whether you do or not. So I think that doing a little bit better on the definition of improvements would be a good idea. We asked about performance guarantees, and again, he says, yes, you can get them, but you better define what you need. We asked him about the definition of one of the items, G, item, section seven or section eight, item G, the definition of plating jurisdiction, he didn't know what it meant, we didn't know what it meant, so he's saying, why don't we just take it out of there? Probably a pretty good idea. Also, where this, where the site plan regulations kinda generally refer to the subdivision regulations when things apply, he says it's better to, even if it's just a repeat, take all those regulations and write them in the site plan regulations as well, rather than refer one to the others, just not a good practice to do. A lot of the site plan review definitions are in conflict with state review process definitions and so forth, and he suggests going through the IRSAs to update our regulations because our regulations apparently are using old requirements specifically to do with times for approval, where we in some cases ask for ninety or stated ninety days, the state RSA requires sixty-five, I think that the day is, not to be specific, but it's a time regulation situation that we have in our specs that is in conflict with the RSA, we should get them in sync with the RSA to be legal. We talked about the inspection requirements that we have in the site plan review with regard to the ASBIL, he said that's a good idea, keep it as a requirement. Definition of minor development, it's a, I think it, he says it requires a bit more definition than just the word minor. There's, there are some duplicates that should be removed between specifications, regulation for subdivision and, and site plan review. The four-year exemption with regard to changes in site plan regulations after approval should be five-year exemption according to the state statute, so that should be changed. Appeals, there should be appeals section added based on RSA's, state RSA. So generally, I mean, that's not a very good resume of it, but there are things that I think should be looked at, I don't think there's a great deal of expense involved, I don't, I, I think Mary can do a lot of it by, you know, just parroting the RSA, I think that's what Stephen Whitley suggested, was just take the wording right from the RSA, that way we're not in conflict with it. He was specifically speaking at the time with regard to review periods and several cases that has to be changed, so I would suggest that we take the next step and have Mary and Steve Whitley provide us with something that covers those issues and just update things and, Mark, he didn't, you didn't talk to him about how much that would cost or anything, did you?
Not yet, no.
Do you see it as a major expense?
No, I mean, it'll be, it'll come out of your line item.
Typical budget.
Budget, yeah.
Well, I think it's important to do that, if we're in conflict with the IRSAs, I think we should get that taken care of, I don't know how the board feels, I'll open it to discussion.
The, the one thing in the discussion that I think he tried to encourage us to get was some definition of what is a minor improvement, right?
Right.
Can he do that, or was he expecting that we would do that?
I think, it was my understanding, he was expecting us to do that.
Alright, so, could, to me, that's the most important change that we could make, you know, is to try to agree to some definition of what constitutes a minor improvement versus, I don't know what else to call it. Yeah, so for the purposes of whether we can waive the need to do a site plan review.
Yeah, I think he was talking about definition of development and, yeah, define, define minor nature of development, copy and paste waiver request agreement, make sure minutes reflect why the waiver's approved, that, that was the item he was talking about.
Yeah, right, so I have no problem at all with him proceeding on cleaning up the rest of the language, but that, that would remain the one area we're gonna have to somehow come up with some agreement.
He referred to a, an RSA for that item, so perhaps.
We did?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
Six seventy-four forty-four.
Well, then maybe we oughta ask him if he could help us draft such a thing.
Well, yeah, I think even. Well, yeah, I think even suggested that Mary could look that up, he gave, he gave the actual RSA. And he says, copy and paste waiver request, so.
Alright, okay.
And I think probably that could be worked out between Mark and Mary and Steve, you know, what Mary could do and what he would have to do. If Mary didn't feel comfortable with it, then, but yeah, you're right, I think that, and that is one item that he did say would be covered. And he has all these things written down, I mean, he has a record of, well, my record, I shouldn't say that, but. He has those items that he presented to the workshop and he could just go right through those.
Yes.
That would seem like a good way to move forward, so at least we can start things and they can identify anything that we need to hash through as far as coming up with definitions.
I think it would help us answer the questions of the applicants. With regard to what's, you know, do I, am I required to do this, or am I required to do that, it would help, I think. Although he did say that you can't have everything in writing, and some of it is left to judgment, but. The more you have that you can go by for making that judgment, I think the better off you are, so. So, is there any other comment with regard to that? Is it the general consensus of the board then, that we should go ahead with that request to. Steve Whitley to come up with that list?
Yes.
Alright. Mark, can you go ahead and get him to present that to us for another meeting? I will close that item. Next on the agenda. Resident electronic participation in meetings. Mark, were you gonna look into that from other towns with regard to the North Country Council and find out what they do about that? I think at one time, but I know you've had some interruptions there, so perhaps not.
I, I have not done it yet, but I will.
I think that was the next step, we had asked even Stephen Whitley about that.
What did he say?
Well, he didn't really have an answer, said, look at what other towns do and, and so I think, I think the next step is to see if we can. In fact, he might, if you've asked him, he might look into other towns. But whether the best source is North Country Council or Steve, who does other towns too, so. But I think what we need at this point, the next step with regard to this issue is to see what, what's out there, how other towns handle it. At least there's some sort of an idea as to what to do with it, we have had some discussion on it, but haven't had anything conclusive. Alright, so Mark, you'll.
So this is specifically the question though, of can someone comment in the course of a public hearing?
Live feed, right.
Right, via some method, on, you know, provide a comment to the meeting.
Right.
Or even a regular meeting, right, not just.
Sure, yeah.
Right. I think we had discussed it and said, well, you know, there were several different opinions of what we thought would be acceptable and not acceptable. But I think it does require legal advice.
You gotta have something in writing, it should be part of your, your rules of procedure.
Right, exactly, that's what we were going to do, we were gonna add to the rules and procedures because it wasn't, we had decided you couldn't, that an individual could not respond. An individual board member could not respond individually to that person over email during the meeting and so forth. But I think you're right, I think the next thing to do is to get some ideas to what is acceptable and what's being used by other towns. And then add it to the rules and procedures, so the next step would be to get that.
I, I, I would be in favor, just so we know, of allowing people prior to the meeting. To submit written questions and/or comments relative to a public hearing that would then be read out in the meeting.
Yes.
You know, I would have no objection to that, the question becomes. If you, do you go the next step with the public hearing is quote on now, do we accept an email? And I would, I would say, that's fraught with, we're not gonna get it. It's gonna get lost, so I, I would kind of recommend that we restrict ourselves to comments we receive in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, or worse, we receive one person's in support and miss the person's against it.
I sent you an email, you didn't read it, you know.
This is limited to the public hearing portion of it, is that what you're saying?
Right, in other words, during the actual public hearing period, comment period, you know, while the meeting is taking place. We would not accept emails.
Okay.
You know, 'cause I think it's just not administratively difficult.
But emails ahead of time.
I don't have any problem with stuff ahead of time.
That we could read during the public.
Right.
As long as they come to a town.
Yes.
Yeah, they have to be sent to a town, something, town office, but.
Your private emails.
So just, you know.
Okay, well.
So we ought to check to see whether other towns allow that to happen.
Okay.
But I, I would assume that it's just an administrative thing on our part.
Yeah, I mean, if they're coming in before the meeting, we just print them out and copy them and.
And read them into the record, right.
Okay, how do we get these ideas, sooner or later, we're gonna have them into the rules and procedures. How do we get to that point, make sure these ideas aren't brought?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to local towns.
Yeah.
Regional towns and have something, we can put it in the tickler for next meeting.
So, will you have something that's put together that says this is what we would suggest, okay, good.
If they address it, I'll just pull it from theirs and.
Okay.
Put it in ours.
Alright, thank you. Can you put that on the agenda, now, will you, do you think you'll have that for next meeting?
Yeah, it just needs to be put on the agenda of the tickler for next one.
In Mark's name in parentheses afterwards, so he can't slip up. I have a hard time remembering who's supposed to do something on these agenda items.
Yeah.
Any other old business anybody wants to bring up? Okay, we'll move on to new business, and I see Bill Lash's name.
Yep.
Review on signs.
Signs, so, before we start, Mr. Chairman, can you give me, it was not intended to cover all of this information in one day, alright? So how much time would you like to allocate today?
I, I wouldn't, let me see, we have two.
It's nine o'clock, so you, an hour?
An hour?
Try an hour, because we've got several, several meetings to, to, to go through this stuff before we run out of critical time.
Yeah.
You know, I hear, see people grimacing, you want a half hour, whatever you wanna do.
Well, I, I'm willing to go an hour, you're the, pretty much the last item of communication.
Well, you, if you think it's getting out of control, just cut it off. Everyone's got a copy of a packet where what I did was, well, let me, let me, let me back up and talk a little bit. Why are we doing this, alright? This is, the reason we're taking on signs again is there is, I think, a general belief. They like the current situation where signs are relatively restricted, where we don't have real estate signs all over the place. And signs announcing this and signs announcing that, right? The problem is, was that the Supreme Court passed a ruling that it effectively. If a lawyer wanted to take us to court, and that's a really big if, 'cause I can't imagine. Then probably all of our sign regulations would grow, would get thrown out because they attempt to regulate content on the sign. All of our regulations are aimed towards things like you can't have a real estate sign, or you can't have a general contractor's sign. And the Supreme Court's, basically their ruling was, you, you can write sign regulations, but, but you, you, you. Your regulations, you can't look at the message. You, you can't examine the message on the sign as part of your regulations. You can regulate the thickness of the types of materials, all of this stuff, but you can't regulate the message, freedom of speech. So, with that thought in mind, what we did was took the current regulations and said, okay, how could we rewrite these? To keep the spirit of what we have, but yet at the same time, not plow into the issue of what is the message that's on the sign. So, the intent of this rewrite was to do that. I have also, for the, what we're gonna start to review today, I've only kept the highlights, all the. There's a lot of boilerplate that gets written into all of this, so I stripped the boilerplate out, so that we don't spend time talking about boilerplate type of stuff. So with that, let's start with sign code and regulations, so there'd be a statement of purpose is always the first and most important thing. And the guiding principle on these regulations is that signings should not destroy or detract from the scenic vistas. Or compete unnecessarily with the natural environment, that's our objective with relative to signing. We like the natural environment, we don't want signs to compete with that, alright? Now, at any point in time, this, this is a work in progress, so somebody thinks this is stupid, you know, or. You know, suggests that it's just a changes, I'd like to get some feedback and comment, and we'll incorporate those.
When do you want feedback and comment, do you want it now?
What, do it now, I'd suggest we try to do it now.
So, I think the other point about signs is that they shouldn't compete unnecessarily with each other. Even if there's.
Okay.
Necessarily a sign or two, or a message on a sign, two messages, say, on signs. That we might want at a corner, we wouldn't want two signs there, and so, and we've talked about this before.
Okay.
We don't want signs that compete with each other, that's why we've talked about putting things together.
Alright, now, what we're gonna do is divide everything after this into two categories now. Signs that are on private property, regulations regarding sounds, signs on private property. And then there's a whole section on signs on public property and public rights of way. Most of our signs are in fact on public rights of way, so that is town, that, that is town land, alright? So there's a different set of regulations for town land than there is for public land. Alright, so let's start with private property. So, basically, we start out with a statement that says that provision of these regulations shall apply to everything. That's on private land in the town of Waterville Valley. So there is no section of private land that's exempted from these regulations, everything's covered. But there are some specific things that I'm recommending we exempt, alright? And the essence of these are to some extent in the current regulations. Signs which are not visible, which I'm gonna define as readable, from a public right of way, we're not gonna regulate. So if somebody wants to put up a sign inside of a condo complex, alright? That's not visible from a public right of way, that's the condo association's business, that's not ours. Alright, that's a little bit different, so town square, again, sign in town square. If you can read, most signs in town squares can be read from a public right of way. But, you know, if, if it wasn't, if it wasn't readable, then we don't, we don't care, you know, that's your business. That's, that's the business of whoever owns that property. So that's the first thing we would, I would propose we exempt. Signs smaller than seventy-two square inches, now why? Well, you know, if somebody's got, you know, it's not the intent to regulate if I wanna put on the side of my house a sign that says Larson's live here. It might be readable from a public right away, but it's a little tiny sign, and I'm saying, ah, yeah, you can have that, or you wanna have your numbers. 'Cause the definition of signs covers basically anything. So we're saying, you know, we're gonna have a little small plaque that's okay with us, you know? Signs that are needed.
Can I ask, did you find the other towns use a seventy-two square?
No, I, I don't, you know, no, I haven't, I haven't found anybody that, there's, some people try to exempt them, but they don't give size.
That's pretty small.
It's very small.
Yeah, I came up with a foot by six inches.
'Cause I'm thinking of like a neighbor who has a round sign like this on their fence, and I don't think that's seventy-two.
I, I, if you wanna go to, if you wanna go to, if we wanna go to a square foot, or two square feet, whatever you want. But somehow, we gotta let people have some flexibility.
Yeah, I agree with you, I just don't know what the number is and how to.
Yeah, because I, I'm just thinking about a couple of signs going up our hill, and just head back a little bit, and it's the person's name, and if you've got. I mean, it's alright if your name is Smith, but if your name is.
Right.
Casawaske, you know, you need a bigger sign. So.
Maybe we'll just look at.
So we'll question that.
Well, I would just mark it for review or consideration, yeah.
Well, yeah, we're not doing anything today.
Right.
Signs that are needed for public safety or E nine eleven regulations. There are certain signs that are required on private property that the, so this gets into such things as. If it's a public right of, if it's a private driveway, but it's, it's used as a fire lane. There has to be a sign that designates it as such, so those signs are all allowed, we're not gonna argue with anything. E nine eleven regulations are pretty much your house number, you gotta allow people to have the house number up there.
So, how about something like not a through street or something like that?
If, if, anything that's required by those regulations, we're, we're not gonna get in the business of regulating. And anything that public safety says essentially, I need that, you know, we need a sign that says, this is not a through fair. Yeah, they're, they're all exempted from these rules. So, it's whatever, if the police say they want it, they get it. Flags, insignia or plaques, did I spell plaques right, every time I read that, it looks like plague.
I think it's right.
Yeah, of any government or governmental agency, so we are not banning the American flag. We're not, you know, or the state flag or anything like that, so if you've got some kind of a plaque or something like that, you can display the flag. That's not an issue.
What about decorative flags?
Well, decorative flags are, that's, that's a whole nother matter.
'Cause you could be talking about like a kitty and candies, or you could talk about like.
I don't know, I think it's a sign.
That, yeah, I consider that a sign.
It's a sign.
Okay.
It's intended to convey a message, the definition of a sign is any number, symbol, blah, 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 that's intended to convey some kind of a message. So, yeah, you hang a banner off, you know, your house, technically, it's a sign.
The, the definition of sign you're using from some other.
Well, it's in our regulations today, I didn't bother to get the definitions down here, but I, if you would like to see all of these, I'll.
As long as it's somewhere in the same regulation, I don't.
Oh, yeah, no, it's in the definitions, they're all defined. But so, and if you're, political signs, we can't regulate political signs by law, alright? So we just stick them in here anyway, you wanna put up, vote for such and such, that's your right, and we're not even crossing that barrier. Now, we don't have a problem with proliferation of political signs, but we cannot ban them. I mean, that would, we would surely invite a lawsuit from some lawyer who's got nothing to do if we tried to do that.
And they can be any size?
Anything, there are state regulations, and the state regulations require that they be removed within X days of the election.
Off of state right of ways. So you can put a political sign on your own personal property of any size, shape, color, whatever. And leave it there as long as you want, but on the state rights of way, they're made to take them down after the elections.
So the Bernie Sanders signs still remain in the town of Waterville Valley and property, even though they're eight by eight feet? Can't do anything about that?
Can't do anything about it.
I don't think we can, it's freedom of speech. And. Well, that's, and, and the nature of what we're about to go on to. If somebody wants to interact, if we write a regulation that says you can have a sign under these circumstances, and it must look like this. There's nothing that says, somebody can't write on there, you know, Allah saves. I mean, we, we're not gonna be able to regulate the message any longer at all, that's gone. So what we can regulate is the numbers, locations, types, you know, but we can't regulate message.
Okay, but you can't, you can't regulate the size of the political sign on a private property.
Not political, political signs are specifically exempted by the state, there are state rules, and you must conform to those. But we can't override those rules. There are state rules and you must conform to those, but we can't override those rules. So, and the last one of what gets exempted right now is all signs on and indicating the existence of private property. So like, do not hunt, you know, these kinds of things are limited to like, you know, like mad dog lives here, don't trespass. If somebody wants to put that sign up, they got a right to do it. And I, I don't think we should be banning those, you know, from private property. All right?
I don't think you can, like no trespassing.
Well, I don't know whether you can. I think we could. I think you actually could ban them.
I think you could ban the, you could set the size requirements, but I don't think you can ban them.
Right, because someone wants to post their property, no trespassing.
That's right.
You have to allow them to do that.
Right. That, that's what I would recommend. Yeah. So then general requirements, now, now we go into, again, on private property, there are two types of signs, permanent signs and temporary signs. The definition of a temporary sign is fourteen days. If your intent is to have it up for fourteen days or less, it's temporary. If your intent is to have it for more than that, then it becomes into the classification of permanent. Now, we can change that.
This is defined somewhere, right?
Oh, yeah, then, well, that it is. And we allow temporary signs to be renewed once. So technically, you can come up with twenty-eight days. But after that, it's supposed to be taken down. So even though you have to get a permit, you gotta get approval and all that stuff, even on a temporary sign, after twenty-eight days, you gotta remove it. You can't allow it to stand. Now, we can change that. If you don't think, if you think that we oughta, you know, that we're going down a road here that's crazy, we can, we can make it whatever we want. There's no requirement. So fourteen days could be, you got a year. I mean, I, you know, whatever you want, whatever the planning board wants.
Fourteen days sounds reasonable to me.
Right. Now, so let's get into general requirements for permanent signs. So these are the general requirements and then there are specific requirements depending on the type of land that they're going on. So let's start with general requirements for permanent signs. Maintenance. So first of all, signs shall be in good order and repair at all times. Says constitute no danger or hazard to the public safety or hands at all that will attract us to the town. Permit is required for the relocation, enlargement, redesign or similar alteration of an existing sign. We prohibit certain types of lighting. These are in the current regulations and they would stand. So no exposed or similar lighting of illumination, including open light bulbs, except indirect lighting, shall be permitted. No internally lighted signs are permitted. Now, we've got a couple of these and they will be grandfathered, but we're saying no more. You can't have a, you can't have a plastic sign that's got a bulb inside it. All right? Now, again, we can allow these, whatever you wanna do. So think about these and at the next meeting, we'll come back over again and say, gee, I don't know. I think you, I don't think this is reasonable. So no flashing, blinking and/or rotating lights are permitted. No action or animated signs will be permitted. Signs can't make sounds. Exceptions to that is, is if there's a state law or regulation that requires the sign to make some noise, we would allow that. I can't think of any, but just in case that, you know, from a public safety perspective, there was a rule that says you had to have a flashy light on a certain kind of sign. Construction and aesthetic requirements, this, this, this actually gets pretty important. So we're saying for something to be considered a permanent sign, you need a permit, it's gotta withstand the wind load of at least thirty pounds per square foot. That's pretty standard in most towns that I've checked. I don't know how we determine that, but anyway, you can't have a flimsy sign. The maximum size unless further restricted, and there's lots of further restrictions later on, is twelve by twenty-four feet. Under no circumstances can you have a sign bigger than that. We do have a couple that are up around the twelve by twenty-four range.
Would you, is it explained somewhere and it may be what the sign consists of? In other words.
Yeah, later we'll get on.
Okay.
Where I, it took an attempt to define what a sign can be made of. So the maximum height of a standalone sign is twenty-five foot from the top of the sign to the grade. So it can't be bigger than twelve by twenty-four. And if you put it up on stilts, the top of it can't be more than twenty-five feet off the grade. And if the sign's attached to a building, it can't be any higher than the drip edge of the building. So you can't stick a sign up on top of the roof of a building. All right? Signs can't restrict the view lines of pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists. So it's on your property, but you can't restrict view lines?
Can I back up a little bit?
Sure can.
Drip line of the building.
Drip line of the roof.
The roof has, say, a cupola or something like that, or.
Point, I don't know.
Now, which drip line do you use?
Highest or main.
I would say the, in the main drip edge of the roof.
We may wanna define it a little bit further that way because I can just see all kinds of, cause that would allow.
Majority of the drip line or something.
Well, drip line of the main roof, I would say.
All right. So, solid signs will be constructed of substantial materials designed to enhance the natural beauty of the valley. Suitable materials include wood, masonry metals or substitute materials which simulate them. Lettering should be professional and either engraved, carved or painted. Use of thin sheet metal, plastic, card, paper or cardboard is prohibited on permanent signs. Banners or, you know, pennants shall be, you know, professionally printed on materials of a lasting nature. Colors which clash with the natural landscape are prohibited. Use of fluorescent and bright colors is prohibited. So this is, this is important because this gets into trying to, without saying, you know, people wanna say, well, they should be of the water, you know, the New England style. What we're attempting to do here is actually give some more definition as to what a New England style would be. So we're saying wood, masonry, metal are all acceptable. Or you can have plastic if it's designed to simulate those. But no thin sheet metal, no, you know, like those are out for permanent sign. So give some thought to this one because this is the one that, that really is gonna become important in the future because we're saying this is, this has gotta be a sign and I, I'd be open to all the help I can get, you know, in terms of, when we get to the, so now these are, this is signs on private property. We get to signs on public property, we have a little more leeway because we own the land. So we could say, we actually do make a statement that says, we'll just reject anything for any reason.
Word included?
What?
Wording included?
Oh, no. Well, no, I don't think I, well, I think on public property, we can reject any sign for any reason. We don't have to give you a reason why we reject your sign.
I would agree with that.
You know? Yeah, it's our land.
Yeah.
Right. So I, all the help I can get, you know, is, is to, what kind, what do we want these things to look like?
I think it's more, what do we don't want these things to look like?
Do we wanna say something more about encouraging sign, business signs to, conform is probably a strong word, but to match the branding, the resort branding? Because a lot of the, a lot of the directional signs that we're talking about having on public property are gonna be of a standard brand. And we can't make somebody do it, but we can encourage them. Can't we?
Well, I think you would encourage it by the review process, though. I don't think you can encourage it in written regulation, can you?
Well, I don't see why we couldn't make a statement that we would encourage business is.
Businesses to match the resort branding colors and.
Style.
Style or something. I mean, I don't know what the language would be.
Well, I, I think later on, we get into defining something on the public side because what I was picking up was the, the committee that's already working on trying to establish a uniform look of signs. Then we're gonna call that the Waterville Valley Resort. We're gonna give it a name. We're gonna call it the, you know, assuming the standard ever comes up, the Waterville Valley Resort Sign Standard. And we can encourage businesses to conform to the look of the Waterville Valley, you know?
Resort brand.
Resort brand.
Yeah. But the problem right now is, is I don't know if we've got an agreed to.
Not yet.
Waterville Valley. So, any problems with that piece? The bright colors, the fluorescent colors, we wanna get rid of those anyway, right?
Do, do we need to define bright colors?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, what is, what is a bright? I mean, I sort of, we don't wanna say it's bright. You know, like I thought of, well, a white sign's okay, you know?
Yeah, cause they're really bright. They reflect everything right back at you.
I don't know. I, you know, we're into.
Yeah, and small, small splurges of bright colors can be attractive sometimes.
Yeah, right. So maybe instead of our, we oughta say bright fluorescent colors are discouraged?
Well, maybe you should be looking at more that, whether it's pleasing and all, and I know that's judgmental for sure.
The advice of council was, if all we're saying is, you know, give me the right to say it's good or bad, that's not gonna cut mustard. You, you have to have a definition. Yeah.
Okay, what about if you just said use of fluorescent or bright colors that are distracting from the environment?
Right. Well, that's was the attempt, that use of bright colors that are distracting.
But that way, if it's distracting, you don't want it. Unless you're a business and you want the, you know.
You want the attention.
Okay.
But I, I think the key word is this thing.
From the natural environment.
Yeah, the, the key word is aesthetic because it, as you mentioned in the beginning, the purpose is to not ruin the aesthetics of the town. And I think that a gaudy sign would be against that purpose. Now, once again, it's a judgmental thing, but.
It, it, so I, I think we're all on the same page. It's just some of the wording scares me and some of the, like, the, the blowback I got from painting my stupid Dorit Dreams, the color that matches our sign, I was like, seriously, people, it's so bright, it's blinding. It's, it's a rose color. And you know, that's, that's, you know, in my life, what I'm thinking, well, what are we opening ourselves up to here? So I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's the age old problem of architectural standards of even town, you know, there are towns that have architectural standards, but boy, they are, there are regulations that are pages and pages long in order to, to get them to stand the muster. So the town, advice of town council is anything that we could do to help define the standard has a better chance of withstanding scrutiny.
I just can't imagine trying to govern the colors, though. That's quite.
Okay.
Difficult, I think.
Well, how about fluorescent?
Fluorescent.
Well, you could get rid of fluorescent.
Yeah, fluorescent's, I would keep that in there.
Okay. So the question is bright colors. So maybe the, instead of saying.
Or clashing?
Or, right, that.
Well, it all comes down to aesthetics.
Back to the natural environment, right?
There's obviously gonna be always some sort of gray, gray area. No matter what you write, someone's gonna come in with a sign that says, well, you know.
It's personal taste.
Yeah.
Like they're, they're rebuilding that sign that, that was sitting out, you know, about the first ski area, you know, the first place, the home of, you know, and I made the comment, I didn't like the white. I thought the white looked stupid. It was, it didn't match any other sign around. Other people love the white. And I realized, well, it's in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. So, and then we say change panel signs. So these are signs that where you can, you change the message around or okay, as long as they conform to all of the other regulations. We have a couple of these. All right? Again, all of this is on private property. The rules are different when you get to public. General requirements for temporary signs on private property. So this is temporary signs on private property. They may be displayed once for a maximum period of fourteen days and require a permit. Permit may be extended for one additional period. Once a sign is displayed for more than twenty-eight days, it must be removed. I think this is gonna be critical to get something like this if the intent is to get real estate signs and general contractor signs out of here. You know, cause they all tend to be, nobody wants to spend the money to make it a permanent sign. So they're gonna wanna just, you know, erect their little sheet metal thing and we're saying, look, you can, fourteen days, maybe you can get it renewed once, but that's it. You know, you gotta get, after that, it's gotta come out. Temporary signs may not exceed, yeah.
I think we just need to make a note and I don't have a recommendation on this, but the contract, some of the contractor's signs are used to direct deliveries. So the twenty-eight day thing, I can see being a problem for a general contractor building a house or something like that.
I would agree, yeah.
So just, I mean, I don't know how to handle that, but, but I think we just need to make a note to discuss how we want.
The problem is, how do I, how do you do it without saying general contractor signs are permitted? I, I can't, you can't make a comment that favors one type of message over another.
I understand. I just, we gotta.
And so I think that's something to think about, you, you, you know? Now, later on, we get into further restrictions in terms of depending on the type of property you own, as to whether you are allowed, not allowed, temporary signs. And maybe that's the way to do it, basically say.
Well, you could make an exception for a parcel.
We could.
That has a permit, a valid building.
We have, for instance, residential development under construction is a category of type of line. And we say available, allowable temporary signs. You're allowed one sign per road access. And we could say, you know, for, you know, restrict, restriction on the twenty-eight day restriction is, is, is gone.
Right. And it, and I would, I would link that to a valid building permit. You know, make them because somebody that just goes in and puts a tub in and wants to put the sign up because the tub needs to get delivered or whatever, that's a silly example, but we should link it.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, some thought. Okay. Then we say temporary signs, other requirements, signs may not exceed three foot by three foot. So no temporary signs bigger than three by three. They should be constructed of materials that will last up to fourteen days in typical weather conditions. They gotta be professionally lettered. Handwritten paper or cardboard signs are prohibited. So even here, you gotta make some effort to make the sign look reasonable. Temporary banners, flags and other outside decorations are considered to be temporary signs and they may not exceed ten square feet. So if you wanna hang a, you know, a banner outside your house or something, you know, for a short period of time, it's a temporary sign. Technically, well, we'll go on a little bit.
How about, how about a bundle of pink balloons?
Yeah, or if you have a. Yeah, or if you have a.
I don't know, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not of the mind to say that's a sign. What's the message to?
Well, are we encouraging that though? If we say you can't hang a flag that says party, are we encouraging crappy plastic balloons instead?
You know, my reaction is, is we're gonna get a lot of violations of this and we're not gonna enforce them.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, otherwise you'll end up with regulations that are, that are just endless. Is anybody actually gonna come down who owns a house that wants to put a flag out that's got like spring on it? Gonna come down and apply for, for a sign permit?
None of us think of that, no.
This isn't something that comes before the planning boarding and gets approval, this is something that.
No, this is board of selectmen or their agent, and our, and I think we've designated you as our agent, right? I don't even think we're reviewing these.
So they walk into the office with an application?
They say, yeah, and they pay, as long as you pay the money, you can have the sign. So then the concept is, and then I'm gonna stop after this, after section G, cuz this is lengthy. The concept after that is to further restrict signs based on, this is private property, based on the type of property. So for instance, single family and two-family homes. What we say is, you're allowed a permanent sign, you can allow one sign per site limited to three feet by three feet. Now, all of this is open, and temporary, we say you're not allowed anything. That's the way you're gonna control real estate signs.
So just, so that three by three should probably be here with the seventy-two square.
Well, no, we just say that that's, that's overall, they cannot exceed three by three unless they're further restricted. And in, in which case, we could further restrict them, I, I, I don't know what to say. You know, if somebody wants to put a sign up, you know, do we allow a sign up on a single-family home site?
Well, the three by three, it's, it's kind of a reasonable size.
Yeah.
You know, if you're thinking of a circular.
You might be better off with square feet, with nine square feet or something like that.
Exactly, yeah.
Cuz some sign might be longer and there, yeah, a little more flexibility.
No, it's okay. But the principle here is, we would allow you to have one sign, no temporaries. That may be, and, and then we might like make statements like a home decoration is not considered to be a sign. So we're gonna exempt home, it's something you consider to be a home decoration.
Yeah, and that.
Like a flag without words on it.
Yeah, right, right, unlike spring or, you know, or you put banners up for the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Well, that's a governmental thing, so that's exempted anyway.
A lot of people will put something up for a day or two days, something, if there's some sort of a big event going on at their house.
Had a baby or.
But we're, what we're trying to do is historically, we've, without saying it's a kind, we're trying to really prevent contractors, remodelers, who would love to stick their little metal sign out, you know, their home being remodeled by X Y Z company. I suspect we'll get some pushback from, from remodelers because, you know, they, they, they wanna put those signs up. And then it goes to a whole bunch of categories, and I'm not gonna bore you by reading all of these categories, but I'm just gonna mention the categories I can come up with. So, single family, two-family homes, completed condominiums and home associations. So we're gonna have a different set of rules for them. Completed commercial properties that have multiple businesses in them. Vacant land.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Just, I'm a little slower than you, I read, I'm thinking. Single-family homes, uh, open houses, typically there's a, the final sign for an open house direction thing is on that property.
I don't know what to do. It's up to you, do you wanna allow temporary signs for, you know, on the property or?
I think we should, I mean, if they're applying for a permit and it's fourteen days.
They usually only have a day.
Right.
And you do see them now, and I don't find them that offensive, I mean, I, right now, we've only had so many realtors in town and there aren't a lot of open houses, I mean, if things start to kick in, then.
Yeah, what we can't say is open house signs are, are allowed.
No, you can't say that, no.
I can't say that.
Right.
So, but we could say, um, temporary signs.
But for temporary, you could say something for a day or two days or something like that. No more than two days or.
So one for a maximum of two days?
Yeah, and then you'll have to give it a period because they'll take it down for a day and put it back up for two days. At least, I, I just think it should be somehow considered for further discussion, that's all.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the stuff we need to kind of think about. So now, complete, you know, condominiums and homes, so the first rule is, the rule of thumb is, if you can't see this sign outside the boundaries of the condo, that's up to the condo. What they, so if they wanna allow for sale signs, they have all the for sale signs you want inside your condo. That's a condo, not a town decision, alright? We say, once you're allowed one permanent sign per point of access from a town road. So anytime you have access to a town road, you can put up a big sign, big permanent sign.
But you can't put up two, so if you, you're driving down the road and there's a, you've got a large condominium complex in a large parking area and you have an entrance over here, it runs along several of the units and then comes back out down here. You can't have a sign at both entrances.
Yes, you can, because those are two points of access. So it's per road, so you get one wherever you got a road. But you can't have a sign and then a couple of later, you know, a couple of feet later, another sign.
Well, what about, um, you have the Snow Star and the Inns of Waterville Valley, they use a common access.
True.
Onto Packard's Road.
Could be a single sign.
Well, right. We, we, we would just, I guess, in interpretation, interpret that to mean that that's two points of access. One for each building, even for each thing, that would be my answer, but. And then in addition to the signs per point of access, you allow one sign per building. So inside, you can get one three foot by three foot sign per building. Two signs per standalone business operating within the association, so that if they, if somebody had a standalone business, they got a different set of rules. They, they can have two signs, one of which must be attached to the building. That's pretty much the way we do it today. So, Roper Real Estate, they can, you know, if, as long as it's okay with the association, they can put a sign up. It's alright with the town. I, I, I don't think we're in trouble, you know, we're, allowing it from a town perspective doesn't necessarily give people a right from a condominium association perspective. I mean, the condo association would still say, no, I'm thinking, but. But anyway, rather than going through, cuz you can read these on your own and then the next time we'll take comments. The types of, different types of properties, I came up with completed commercial, vacant land. Then we get into vacant land, but there's an approved site plan for either residential or commercial construction. Recreational properties, and they're brutal, I, I, you know, what do you do with the, the guy wants to have, you know, ninth tea? You know, you can't ban that.
But you can't really read it easily from the road most of the time.
Well, I tried to get around it by saying signs on the property used to direct persons within the recreational venue are exempted.
Sure, yeah.
You know, so if you wanna have signs that help you to, to do the recreational thing, you're okay. Recreational property, then residential development under construction. So now we get, somebody's building a home, right? So it's a single family or a two-family home site, but it's under construction. And I, 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 I guess we're really saying under a, her original construction. Not remodeling.
How about additions?
That's a remodel.
I, yeah, I don't know, well, we, you gotta think about it. Because here you wanna, you do wanna allow the contractor's sign, you know, that says you can, you know, you, 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 here's where you drop your materials.
But we talked.
But do we wanna, if it's a remodel, do we wanna allow that? I don't know.
We talked about earlier with valid building permit, would that clarify?
Well, right, but do you wanna allow it for anybody who gets a building, a building permit, that they could put contractor's signs up now? Think about it. That's not what we tend to do today. We tend to ban all con, all, you know, contractor's signs.
But then again, if, like we said before, if it's needed to direct people to direct delivery, how do you?
I don't know, well, I, I, you know, I'm open to one sign, you know? Even in the, you know, in the remodeling, you know.
If a contractor has a tow behind trailer for all his tools and on the side of his trailer.
They all knew, yeah.
Yeah, they all knew.
It says, um, such and such a company.
That's probably we do it, yeah.
I mean, that, that, I don't have any problem with that, and I think it helps as far as, here's where I might, here's where I want the delivery cuz the guy says, oh yeah, my trailer's out there and it's got this sign on it, so I wonder how important those.
Well, I get into that, you know, I, you know, I say, you walk around, so somebody drops a dumpster. On the side of the dumpster is the X Y Z Dumpster Company.
Yeah.
Is that a sign? Well. I think it is, does that?
Well, other, I, I, it probably is not because it probably is on wheels or something, it must be something about it. I know other towns have run into this, I, I remember Northwood, Elmer Tasker. They were, wanted to put up a big political sign and the town wouldn't let him, so he ended up with one of his huge trailers and he put a big political sign right on and parked it right out there and I guess they.
It's still there, I mean, he just changes the message.
Yeah, he does, I know it.
I don't know, it's, it's tough after a while, and what I need help with is on this, is, what do we want?
Well, this is certainly a huge, good start, I appreciate all the effort.
Well, and then, and then we'll, next time, we're gonna go on to public property, but, which is, now, we, we are gonna, we get much more specific and we are gonna make a statement that basically says it's directional only. That's the only thing you're gonna be allowed to have. You, you can't get, you can't apply for permit to, for God saves on public property. You know? But anyway, so if you can think of any other types of property and then look at the, the exceptions and the rest.
Can we send you emails during?
Yeah, absolutely, any way you want, now, I'm gonna try to keep updating, and we've got months of haggling with this thing before we have to finalize and hold a public hearing.
There's not really that many months, I mean, it's a big project and it, it goes quickly.
It's a pain in the neck, right, yeah.
It goes quickly.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Kelly, for all that effort, that's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if the board could review these, uh, regulations for the next meeting, that would be good.
Yeah, now, as I mentioned, these are not actually the documents that would be written. These are just the synopsis for, there's a lot of other stuff that gets written in these things.
Okay. Any other new business? Communications, we have some letters here, I guess, from North Country Council, is that something that anybody's aware of? Must be something Mary.
It looks like it's coming, meeting coming up.
Well, there's, there are.
Oh, one of them.
Meeting summaries. We have a agenda for twenty-first, June twenty-first meeting. We have the meeting summary of the March twenty-ninth meeting.
Yeah, those are, those are for our, our representatives.
For our records?
Those are for our representatives.
Oh.
From the town to the North Country Council Board.
Okay.
And that would be myself and I think Wendy.
Although I haven't been to a meeting, so I, I may have disqualified myself.
No, you're not disqualified.
Nice try. Okay, well, I, I'm not sure what they, uh.
You, you don't, you don't have to worry about them.
Okay. All right. Committee reports, I skipped the committee reports.
Sure, it's okay, we skipped, we haven't, we haven't met yet this month, um, so that's okay. Although something came up that's sort of, kind of, kind of connects. At last month's Resort Association meeting, there was some discussion introduced for that group to try to bring back in a, um, an administrator, someone who could oversee the group via paid position. And the suggestion was made that perhaps there was a way to make it a joint position with a person, because our little history there, the Resort Association had started off with a paid executive director. Our budget was and still is rather small, so finding someone who could really run with all the projects that we needed and had the ability and education, et cetera, for what we could pay, it, it was challenging to find the right person. So the discussion ensued that perhaps there's a way to combine a position with that person being able to address some of the town needs as well. So there's a small subcommittee from the Resort Association, um, Chip Roper, Tom Gross and myself. We haven't met yet to try to figure out what some, uh, job description would be. I don't know if that's something that seems realistic to this group, if, if we wanna take some input. Perhaps Mark would be interested in joining that group to see if, if that's something that is even realistic, but I thought I'd float it by you guys. You know, because I have full confidence that when we, and we did actually, I glossed over it, but we did have another grant that Bill Cantland had pointed out to us and passed that on to Tiffany, and I have full confidence that she'll go after things like a little terrier. But, um, the implementation of, of anything can be hairy, and I don't know if we wanna look at someone who could help with implementing or. I don't know, and just, there could be a possibility of working with the group to, so our, so both the town and, and the group could get someone to help. It's just a possibility at this point.
I, I guess it wouldn't hurt to look into that. What, what you're thinking of is sharing an employee, basically.
Basically.
And we don't have a paid employee at this point that we're paying.
Is, is Mary technically a?
No.
No, okay.
And at this point, we haven't been successful in any grant at this point.
Well, it's not about, it's not about grants. This would be a, a, kind of a mix between an executive director of a chamber of Congress, which is in essence what the Resort Association is, and, uh, an economic development and planner that a lot of municipalities have, even if it's part-time. So the person would fill both roles from what we talked about at that meeting.
Working for the town.
Well, well, no, that, it isn't, that wasn't settled.
Yeah.
It wasn't settled whether it was full-time or part-time, but the idea is to try to get it, you know, at least thirty hours a week, something that's gonna be, that's gonna attract.
Who writes the check?
I don't know, that, that's not.
It's, this is all very, very much the beginning stages.
Because before, the Resort Association was writing the check for their executive director.
And it wasn't a check large enough to attract someone with good skills, and we had someone doing it part-time and it just, you know, and I don't, you know, I'm just, things I've been thinking about in the meantime, you know, I don't know if there's even a way for this is possible, but if, you know, the Resort Association and the town shared a salary or if benefits came from one and salary from, I, I.
But there have been comments about, you know, when Tara Bamford is here to get somebody with not, with a knowledge base that is in planning and in economic development, they can give you ideas and follow through on, on different projects, initiatives, whatever you wanna call them, so that the planning board and the town is, has some kind of coherent coordination. So that the planning board and the town is, has some kind of coherent, coordinated approach to it.
Kind of keep momentum going.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and if the person can write a grant or find somebody to write a grant, then that's just, that's a plus, but it's not a specifically just to be a grant writer.
Right.
So what are you asking the board for opinion there?
I'm, I'm mostly just putting it out there that it's a possibility and I guess for feedback. Feedback if it's something that, you know, we wanna try to put a town spin on it or no, it's a dumb idea. And, and if, if a possibility, perhaps get a little more town input on this little subcommittee so we could really look at what the job description would be, what would make sense.
I think in the past few years, we've been asking the town for a lot of money for planning board issues. Perhaps we continue on with what we have for a while. I mean, I, I just think it might be a little premature at this point. That's my opinion, I mean, I'm certainly not speaking for the board. But having gone up in front of the town and asking for money last time was, I thought that was difficult. I think that the.
Welcome to the club, man.
Yeah, I think the, I think the board would have a hard time justifying any more requests for a while. I think we have to, I think the town expects us to do something with what we've got at this point. I don't know how anybody else feels, but they're welcome to get up in front of the town and ask.
Well, what, what planning board money have you asked for since?
Well, we did the pedestrian village study. And then we did the Tara Ban, Banford thing, and now we've asked for, you know, the other ten thousand dollars, right? We spent.
Okay, yeah.
And it's, and I, just from the reaction of the town, some of the, you can see them saying, well, you know, what, what's been done as a result of it, what have we got? We don't have sidewalks, we don't have signs, we don't have anything really to, to show for it. And although it's in the works, I'm trying to do it and so forth, I think that, I think we should be showing some sort of results for, before we start asking for more. Don't you?
I think part of the reason we don't have results to show is everything is still volunteer-based. It's very frustrating to me, you know, to, uh, we, we put as much as we can in Mark's play and it's, it's to the ceiling, you know? With, with things, you know, between RFPs and everything else that goes into this process. And I just, I, my opinion is that things aren't farther along because we're basing it on people, you know, to squeeze in a few hours a week to get something done. But they don't technically have any, of course, they have the incentive of, of wanting to get it done, but it's not their job. You know, they're volunteering their free time for it.
I just find it hard to grasp the idea that a town like Waterville Valley is gonna ever get any grant money for.
Right, and we're moving ahead, like we've said now, with the assumption that we're not gonna get any grant money. But that moving ahead means we've all gotta take on more work. And do we really all, as a volunteer group, and Mark who already has a full-time job plus, do we all have sufficient time to get that done? And I, I'm just not confident that it's gonna get done expeditiously without, without assistance.
Well, I, you know, I'd certainly be willing to look at it and, but I mean, this should, if it's something that we're going to consider, it should be something that's written down as to what's going to be done, you know, what the.
Well, then that's what we're, I was asking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, input as to what, you know? And maybe we meet and realize it wouldn't work, that this job, job description of someone we're looking for is really not realistic, you know? It's mostly just that this is just starting and it's an opportunity. But it's very much in the inception stages and, and would need some, some feedback from the town to help guide it along. The subcommittee probably wouldn't meet for another couple of weeks, 'cause Tom's out of town till the middle of the month, so.
To put together something to.
Have a job description, yeah, to see if something could wo, could possibly work.
And this would be something that would be developed as a result of planning board action, is what you're saying, right?
Not necessarily.
Planning board requesting.
The town, the town part of this is directly related to the planning board.
So what are, what are you looking for, from the, a recommendation from the planning board to the town that this person be hired? Is that what you're saying?
No, if, no, if, if we were to design a job description, what sorts of things would the planning board like to see this person be able to do?
I see.
Yep.
It is, it's not a recommendation on the position or anything yet. I mean, it.
Yeah, it's not even, it's not real yet.
Position would do, what do you need? What, what do you think would be beneficial in the area of planning?
To add to the job description?
To add to the job description.
And in truthfulness, the Resort Association might decide, well, look, we can't afford it. We're, you know, we're trying to juggle paying a couple of different subcontractors for marketing and for communications, accounting, all these different pieces, maybe, maybe it wouldn't work for the Resort Association either. This is very much an exploratory opportunity, potential opportunity.
I mean, you just said, we, we've spent twenty thousand dollars in the last two years bringing a professional planner in to work with you, to review regulations and, and things like that. So is that something you're gonna need in an ongoing basis? Or once we get this done, are you guys gonna be ready to run everything yourself with no input from a professional?
Which basically means we'd all need to familiar ourselves, from what I'm seeing and realizing, we have to familiarize ourselves better with our SAs on a regular basis or other summaries that come. I mean, there's a lot that we, seems to be going over our heads, over my head anyway, from the state and how, how we're coordinating with that.
And, and there, there are economic development laws out there that if you had someone working with a business that we might be able to, to make, take advantage of, that might benefit our businesses in town. I don't, you know.
Yeah, working with a nonprofit technically, yeah.
So it's, it's not a grant thing, but there, there may be other ways to, to do it.
Okay, then I, I, are some of these things that you're thinking about, things that you are now doing and then we're gonna add other stuff to that? Or, or is, are you talking about things that you're not doing now at all?
Well, I mean, we're doing them as time allows. If, if somebody comes in and we have the time, then we, we work through them. But this would be a person that would go to the businesses and say, hey, you know, have you thought about this? We, we have a, an economic council, economic development council that's down in Plymouth, that there are low-interest loans, there are, you know, micro grants, there, you know? But to have the time to go and research all of those things and then take them to the businesses is where we, where the disconnect is right now. And I don't know if that would be beneficial. I guess the question is, do you think that would be beneficial from a town planning and development standpoint?
I guess I'd have to give it some more thought. I don't know how the other board members feel.
Well, I, it's, it's, it, it, it's gotta be, if it's gonna be done at all, it has to be done very carefully. I, my, my frustration with it is, I, I, I was told by Tal many, many years ago that we hired such, that created such a position and then it got absorbed into the rec department. And then, then the person started just organizing recreational activities. I, i- i- if, if we're gonna create the equivalent, it has to start with what are the things that need to be done? And not with, do we need a body? I mean, that's the wrong way to approach this. The question is, what, what do we want done? That's, what's not getting done today? Now, obviously, some areas such as rewriting regulations, I mean, you know, we're not staying on top of our regulations. But if you're gonna get a person to do quote, general business development, that is very, very hard to do. I, I mean, it just, you know, even you, you, the people we're gonna hire, are they gonna look at this like, huh? What the, what are you talking about? I mean.
Mark suggested something very specific. I don't think he suggested general business development. He suggested something very specific. And I think, I think he is addressing exactly what you're saying, which is if, if we can come up with very specific.
Yeah.
Activities, and we, we probably need to spend a lot more time brainstorming with the full board. Cause there's, this is something that's not gonna happen right away.
Oh, it's, it may not happen, it may not happen at all.
So we've, I think we have plenty of time to think about it. But if we can also think about all the money that we've spent, if this person could do a lot of what Tara has done, then what we can present to the town is, instead of spending ten thousand here, ten thousand there, ten thousand there, we're gonna put this money together and that person's gonna do this job. We're not gonna ask you for the piecemeal money. We're gonna be spending the same amount we have been spending, but we're gonna put it into a single person who's gonna be, who's gonna do this on an ongoing basis. And we're gonna get more value out of it, because we're gonna be doing eight things, not the five things. Because an employee can do more than a consultant.
And I don't think that's how.
The advantage of the consultant is, is every year you have to vote the money. And it gives people the right to turn it down, as opposed to institutionalizing a position that'll creep into something else. And that is where I, you know, because people get in here and then they're employed by the town, it's hard to get rid of them. It's very hard to get rid, once you have a permanent employee, you can't get rid of them very easily in this town. Everybody's, oh, we'll just get rid of them. Well, we don't get rid of them. And what happens is we then search around for something else for them to do because they're uncomfortable doing what you, you know, what you wanted them to do. You know, and, and, and I'm not opposed to doing this, but we gotta be really careful that we're doing this right.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's the problem.
I think as far as, we've done a lot of updating and a lot of correcting and a lot of manipulation of the zoning ordinance and the site plans, you know, the reviews, regulations. This last couple of years, we've been pretty busy doing that. And I think that we're gonna be pretty up to date with that. And I think that we would, I would probably institute a new tradition and that's once a year, have the council, you know, review the, the regulations and make sure they're still up to snuff with the state regulations. Cause I don't think, we got way behind the eight ball on them and there was a lot of review process. But once it's been done, and an annual review isn't really that lengthy, I don't think. You know, Steve Whitley would be pretty much familiar with what the state changes were that year. And so it probably wouldn't be a big expense. So I don't see that as a big issue, requiring someone to continue looking at the regulations and so forth. And as far as chasing down grant money, I'm just not a big believer in grant money for this area. I just don't think there, it sounds nice, but it's just, I don't think it's a realistic hope.
I think the one area that we are remiss in is, and it would be nice if we had a really good town master plan. I think our master plan is at best a amalgamation of stuff. And I think we are required every ten years to update it. I don't think we've met that requirement. And I don't know where we get the volunteers to, to, to really take it on. I mean, but then again, I, you know, we, how do you find, where do you find somebody who can actually do that? I mean, I, it's not an easy skill.
No, unless if you're trained for it, a lot of people are.
You take the business development section of the town master plan, last time, we didn't tackle it because of the problem of, we, where do you find somebody who could do it?
Right, un- unless if you find someone who's trained to do that type of thing.
Yeah, right.
But like you mentioned before, if you do that on a consult basis, you take one section.
Right.
Every year.
Yeah.
And you spend five, ten thousand dollars.
Right.
It actually is less than what you would spend on the employee, obviously.
Well, at least it's focused, you know? You know, it's clear what, what the deliverable is, right, am I, you know?
Right, well, just a thought, and we'll probably go ahead and see what the Resort Association is looking at and if there's a chance for connections or.
Do you want to throw in the agenda and you bring it up again next time, to see if there's any progress made on?
Sure.
Is, is, Resort Development no longer has a full-time coordinator?
We haven't since Jim Wafer's left.
Several years.
So it's been quite a while.
But Jim, Jim Wafer's was a little bit of that problem.
Well, he was a.
I mean, in the sense that what they wanted, and they wanted somebody who was cheap, that had incredible skills. And, and that doesn't exist.
Well, that's precisely our problem. And that's, could be why we don't move ahead with finding one. But it would also, you know, right now, there's of course a lot of overlaps within the organization and the businesses in town. And the thought was, it could be nice to have a third party.
Yes.
You know, really just overseeing what needs to be done and without any potential influences. And also, it could help with continuity. So, you know, there are reasons for the group to look for, for a director.
Is that the title of the position, director?
Executive director.
Executive director. Can you put that on the agenda under committee reports, executive director, Wendy?
I think for a couple of years, didn't the town fund that? Well, we helped defer some of the funding for the executive director position.
Yeah, yeah.
For Wafer's, right.
Or for, the first person was Thomas, what's his name?
The concept, right, yeah.
Okay, that was all.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Yeah.
If there's no other new business.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.